Today is the anniversary of Woodstock, which is my favorite event of all time. I wish I would have been old enough to go, but I wasn't. But...
You didn't think I'd say anything, did you?
Anyways, please rise for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Fraser?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Addy?
Here.
Elder?
Here.
Leibold?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Sleek?
Here.
Okay. Council has a copy of the minutes from the last meeting, and has had a chance to re- I'm sorry. Council has had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting, and are there any changes to the minutes? Then they'll stand as they are. We also have had a chance to review the agenda for tonight. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. So before we get started with the readings, I'd like to address the cancellation of the cruise-in. This is not a city event. It is a private event put on by Rich and Shelley Farmer, and Mike Dukeshire and Tina Roberts. This event was intended for people to be able to enjoy the yestrid years of Fremont. It was not intended to be a drag race or a burnout strip. For those who haven't read the most recent post from Rich Farmer, I have printed it off and can read it to you. Tom Kern had nothing to do with the cancellation of this event. Because he made a comment that he wasn't for this event- This, I don't like this microphone. He gets brow beaten to death on Facebook. It's totally not necessary. It's not Tom Kern. It doesn't have anything to do with Tom Kern or the city of Fremont. This is a private event, and the city has no control over a private event, and neither does Tom Kern. So we are not going to entertain questions about the cancellation of the cruise-in. And now we'll proceed with the meeting. Okay, first reading? Yes?
Second reading of a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Anybody speaking to this?
That's the second reading.
Second reading, we're gonna go for full three readings. This constitutes the second reading of this resolution.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the approval and issuance of a warrant for payment of $3,000 to 419 Pest Control and declaring an emergency.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I would ask council to suspend Rule 4. This is a service that's already been provided. It's an annual service towards the Reclamation Center. However, the purchase order was not put in time, and the service has been provided.
I move to suspend Rule 4.
I second. Okay, Jim Sleek moves to suspend Rule 4. Chris Leibold seconds. Roll call.
Reese?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Leibold?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Angie Reese moves for adoption. Chris Leibold seconds. Any further questions or comments on this? Roll call.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Leibold?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Approved.
First reading of an ordinance amending appropriations within General Fund 101, Municipal Income Tax Fund 201, Public Recreation Fund 211, Water Replacement Improvement Fund 541, Sewer Operating Fund 570, Demolition Security Fund 714, and declaring an emergency.
Paul did send us information on this.
Mm-hmm.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I would ask council to suspend Rule 4. Auditor Grau could not be here tonight. He has provided specific information to city council on the budget amendments, and I would ask council to suspend Rule 4 so we can continue to conduct city business. Thank you.
I move to suspend Rule 4.
I second it.
Angie Reese moves to suspend Rule 4. Jim Sleek seconds. Roll call.
Elder?
Yes.
Leibold?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Addy?
Yeah.
Approved. Oh, no. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Angie.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Angie Reese moves to adopt. Christine Reese seconds. Any further comments or questions on this issue?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody that can, in a nutshell, explain to the public what this is, how we're moving things around, and why? I'm sure a lot of people do that.
I think the mayor might be able to do that.
Can you repeat the question, so the public can hear him?
Andy, here we are.
Denny?
Do you have it, Denny? The information was provided to you, sir.
Well, yes. I was just gonna have it explained to the public why we do what we're doing. No, I just wanted the public to know that we take money from other funds, basically, to move to others where we need to have a transfer of money into other funds. So, kind of in a nutshell, I didn't know how many people understood that. I also don't know if you all know what Suspension Rule 4 is. Basically, that is something that is needed necessarily right away, so we go ahead and suspend Rule 4, which means we don't do any other readings. Good enough? They're all staring at me. Did you notice that? Okay. That's it for me.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Leibold?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Sleek? Fraser?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Approved. Okay. Kristi, I'm gonna ask you to come to the podium first and give a report.
Is there a mic down there? Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. Hello, everyone. I'm Kristi Bilger from downtown Fremont, and you'd like me to just give a general update on things? Okay. So first and foremost, look at these banners at the side here. I'm glad you're all here tonight. Hopefully, it's not your first time being here at the Fremont Community Amphitheater. But if it is, welcome, and thank you for coming here. A lot of hard work and effort went into the amphitheater. Please have the addition for our city. And then again, Fremont Federal Credit Union, they were the sponsor of the entire season. And we've done everything from historical talks, concerts. We've also had jam sessions, and we've had movies. And so far, we've had very good attendance. We wanna get it bigger and better. It's the first year, but very pleased about that. So I wanna make sure, if you see someone from Fremont Federal, thank them, like Krogan Colonial Bank for the farmers' markets. Without them, we wouldn't be able to do all the events we do downtown without their support. So also, we have a farmers' market this weekend. Nice lineup of vendors and things like that. It's also, I don't know if some of you have heard, Odoin Urban is relocating to downtown Fremont. And so this weekend, this Saturday, they'll be open at their new location, which is just that building right there. So 200 South Front Street. So very excited to have them in our downtown. You know, come by, say hello to them. Think that's a great addition. And I also wanted to take a moment to, with Ms. Angie Reese, Charlotte Urban is a part of Fremont Tree and Beautification, and she did pass away. Charlotte Urban did. So I wanna give a prop to Charlotte. She was lovely when I first started in downtown. Done a lot for the city for beautification. And as a woman in Fremont, she's done a lot. First female Rotarian here in Fremont. So I'm glad Odoin Urban is coming downtown. Sad Charlotte didn't stick around just a little longer to see that. But I wanted to give recognition to her, 'cause she's done a lot for the city of Fremont as well. New businesses in downtown. We have Serona Healing and Health next to Odoin Urban. So again, when you're here at the farmers' market enjoying the event, which is Things That Go, we have 36 different large-scale oversized vehicles. Come on down and enjoy that. Food vendors and so forth. And again, also spend some time with the merchants as well. So Farmers Market's coming up, and also the Rotary BBB is here Saturday night as well at the amphitheater. So lots going on in Fremont, and I don't know if you have anything else you want me to touch base on?
How do you rent the amphitheater?
So if you rent the amphitheater, contact me, DowntownFremontInc. That's my office right over there. On social media, message us. The amphitheater is available for rent, for private parties, events, that type of thing. You just contact me. We let you know on the schedule what it is. Pretty simple process. So it's available for the public to obviously use beyond events and things like that. That's what Rotary is using it for, is an event like that. So good question. Yes, there's a cost. Yep. It's broken down to three hours, six hours, or the whole day. Any other?
If you touch base on the scheduling on your Twitter, Facebook?
Yes. So how do you find out about what's going on? I'm the paper queen. I have brochures and rat cards. I also have them in the restrooms here as well. So we pretty much every single weekend and twice a week have something happening at the amphitheater. You can look at the website, DowntownFremontOhio.org. We're on Twitter, Facebook, and we just edit TikTok. This old lady's trying to get hip. So I'm gonna start doing some videos and things like that. So pretty much, or stop into the office to chat with me and find information. But thank you for that stuff.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Ken Frost, nothing for you tonight? Welcome back, by the way. Jamelli? Mayor Sanchez?
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. First and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out for tonight's council meeting. This is the first public council meeting that we've had at the amphitheater, and I think the venue was set up perfect for why you're all here tonight. So there's enough room here. I just wanted to take some time to welcome back our Safety Service Director, who has spent the last six months serving our country down south in an area that I don't even know if I can say where he's at, but he spent six months. I wanna thank him for his service. I'd like to thank all of the people that helped us get by the last six months in our administration. I'd like to thank all of our department heads, and Amanda Sears and Elena, who is not here with us tonight in my administration, who took on double-duty work, and all of our department heads that are here tonight. Chief Wensinger was a great asset, and Erica Williams, I think, is here tonight. I'd like to thank you publicly for the work that you've done during the time Ken was off. So I also would just, I'm just gonna address the Cruisin' Car Show issue just for a second here. The Cruisin' Car Show, I think we are going into our eighth year here this year on the Cruisin' Car Show. From the beginning of the Cruisin' Car Show, we have to remember how all this started. It started off as an idea of wanting to bring back the history of Fremont. For those that grew up in Fremont, even beyond me, you remember the old days of cruising up and down State Street. So the event started off very, very good. In fact, the last seven years have been very, very good. As the mayor of Fremont, I work hard to support everyone that brings ideas on different events throughout our community. We have many, many great leaders who spend a lot of money and volunteer their time to help make events like the Cruisin' Car Show happen. The decision was made to cancel the Cruisin' Car Show, and it's just very sad and unfortunate about some of the comments that I've seen. I haven't seen a lot, because I was on the phone with about 50 to 60 people that called my phone yesterday, you know, as I tried to make myself accessible to the public. You know, so I was able to review some of them comments. I was very, I guess, disappointed to see some of the comments, although I know everyone has a right to voice their opinion. Remember, these are people that spend a lot of time and energy investing in our community. The one thing that I wanna encourage as mayor here in the city of Fremont on September 28th is we can still cruise State Street. We can still get out. We can still enjoy fun. We can still have cookouts. People can still bring their cars out, their classic cars out, and we can still have fun as a community. We can still get out and do all the same things that we were doing before. Maybe we might not have the car show part of it, but we could still have, the community can still enjoy the cruising part of it. You know, so I'm gonna be talking with our law director. I'm gonna be talking with our police chief. You know, we still have to make sure these things are done. I think every one of you that are here agree that, how many people wanna see the Cruisin' Car Show that are here tonight? Is that why you're here? Raise your hand if you agree that you want this to be done in a safe manner. Okay? So that's great, right? So we're all here for the same reason. I wanna see the Cruisin' Car Show happen too. I just want it to be done very, very safely. Anytime you have an event, there's risk, okay? As the mayor, I've worked very, very hard to build relationships with as many, many community leaders, a lot of you that are out here as individuals. But every citizen, everyone here, is a part of making something happen in this city, okay? All of you. You guys are all important to making something happen. We need to turn this opportunity into a positive situation. I was speaking to a young high school kid here who I know his dad. He's a Fremont Ross. He's a hell of a track athlete right here. Luke. He's one of our pole vault jumpers here in Fremont, and he's an excellent kid. His dad retired from our fire department. That young man is here because he wanted to see what was happening with the Cruisin' Car Show. So this Cruisin' Car Show doesn't just mean something to the people that are 65. It means something to the 15- to 16-year-old kids. It means something to the rich people, the poor people, the black people, Hispanic people. It means something to everybody in the community. But what I need you guys to do in the community, whether you support me or not, is support our community. We need to stand together. We need to try to stay positive. We need to try to stay focused. And we can't lose our cool. We have to be Fremonters, okay? I tell people, if you can make it in Fremont, you can make it anywhere. It's kind of an inside joke, 'cause you guys are hard on me sometimes. I'm not playing victim, but I'm not afraid to address the crowd. I'm not afraid to address the community, okay? But I need your help. We can encourage people to come out that day. As the mayor, I understand I have a voice, and I have a powerful voice to influence people. But so do you. You all influence two or three people, or four or five people, or seven to 10 people. Let's encourage people to do the right thing. I said this last year, you guys. This shouldn't be a surprise. I said, "Don't act like knuckleheads in Fremont." I said that. I put the post out. I said it as nice as I could, okay? We have an excellent police department, all right? Our officers aren't complaining about the Cruisin' Car Show. They're not complaining about it. I think their families like it. But it's my job, and it's your job, to put our officers in a position to be able to do their job. And do their job right. I watched two officers darn near get ridiculed by other citizens last year that probably weren't even from Fremont when they were making a traffic stop. I do not want our officers in a situation to make national news for something when they're just trying to enforce general traffic laws. Do you guys agree with me on this? You know, it's just, it comes down to one word. It's just respect. It's respecting each other. It's respecting the police. It's respecting the people that are putting this together. The farmers, Mike Dukeshire. I've worked with Mike and Tina for many years. Those two people have put, I'm telling you, lots and lots of hours into this car show. And many other community events. Those two don't get paid. The volunteers that volunteer for this don't get paid. These events don't happen when people don't step up to volunteer. Whether it's the car show, whether it's events for our kids, whether it's events for our elderly people. I put posts out on social media to try to gather feedback and gather information. So that way, this amphitheater is used for what you guys want it to be used for. This is your amphitheater. We didn't have any naming rights for this. It's the Fremont Community Amphitheater. It's your tax dollars that paid for this. State and federal grants, not local dollars. I couldn't use the $3 million that we got for this, 90% of it, to fix streets. It was specifically for some type of park use. Where continuously, your city council here, you have Democrats and Republicans, and I think an independent person on city council. I can tell you that these people worked tirelessly for you. They reach out to my office all the time trying to get things resolved for the community, despite our political differences throughout the nation. I'm proud to have these people elected as our city councilmen. I'm proud of the leaders that we have here in the city. The problem is, is sometimes we lose track of the mission. And the mission needs to be to improve our community. The mission needs to be to clean up the drugs in our town, to bring jobs to our community, to engage the youth, to be role models, to be good parents, to be good people. That's what the mission needs to be. It needs to make sure that when this 16-year-old young man comes to a city council meeting, he understands how to make a change happen. You guys all have a voice. You all have a vote, okay? And your opinion matters. I try to listen to it. I do, believe me. And so does the police chief, and so does your city council members. But I have to look at the safety of the community, the safety for everyone. I'm not complaining. I'm not victimizing. I love this job. I love the city of Fremont. And I love when people make memes about me. Because if that's what makes them have a good day, then I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. But we have to remember the mission, okay? So the only thing that I ask of you, and for the people that are watching, is to be respectful of each other in the community. Be thankful for every person that goes to work every single day, or has gone to work every single day, to earn the right to be retired, to be able to sit back and enjoy the things that they should be able to enjoy for the years of hard work and commitment that they've given to our community, like our retired fireman, who left too early and too young. But he paid his time to our community, okay? I think there's gonna be an opportunity to make this Cruisin' Car Show work. It might not be what it was, but this could be an opportunity for all of you and the other people that are watching to figure out, to prove to our community, to each other, that we can have fun in Fremont. That we can turn a situation into something, a negative situation right now into something positive. Mr. Farmer and his family spend thousands of dollars in this community donating that people don't even know about. And I've watched that man get blasted. I've seen his wife get blasted. They've taken over Fremont Speedway. They've brought Fremont Speedway back to life. One of the most, the best tourist things that we have in northwest Ohio, they've stepped up, and they've continued to step up. They're business owners in the community. Mr. Kern has invested lots of money. Let's get the elephant out of the bag. I'm not a puppet to anyone. I respect the hell out of Mr. Kern. I respect the hell out of Mr. Farmer. And I respect the hell out of the people that are willing to put the time and commitment to make Fremont be the best community it can be. I don't necessarily have to agree with every decision they make, and I can just tell you, they don't agree with every decision I make. But we respect each other, and that's why we have these investments. This investment wouldn't have happened if we wouldn't have had Chris Leibold on city council. He's a Democrat. I'm a Republican. But we work together. And he helped reach out to the federal officials that he has relationships with to bring the federal funding here. I can work across the aisle, and so can Councilman Leibold. I worked across the aisle with our state senators, with Senator Reinicki and Representative Click, and my friends in Columbus that helped us get state and federal dollars. This stuff doesn't happen on accident. It happens. Amanda Sears is right here. She was hired as a secretary. She stepped up. She's in administrative role. She wrote a $3 million grant with no grant experience. I could take their credit, but it's the people around me that are making things happen. It was her that wrote the grant, not me. I just encouraged her to do it and told her that I believed in her. That's all that I did. It's not about me. It's about you, and it's about the community. So can you guys bear with us, and can we work as a community on September 28th? My birthday's the next day, so it could be a hell of a birthday party, you know? And let's do something fun in Fremont, and let's encourage people to be law-abiding. We can't allow, we were all young, and maybe some of you are here today that are a little younger, but you gotta stop it with your F-250s and your black smoke. Like, that's not okay to smoke three- and four-year-old kids out while they're sitting on the street trying to enjoy you cruising up and down the street. That's not fair, and that's wrong. Do you guys agree with me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all for coming out here tonight. I didn't want you to think that I wasn't afraid to talk to you, but we gotta have a real conversation. I'm not afraid to have the real conversation, okay? It's tough in 2024, being in politics. I'm not complaining. I'm just saying it's hard. It's a tough time for our country. Let's not make it a tough time here in Fremont. Let's make it a good time. Let's enjoy the rest of the summer. We're having a pep rally next August 28th, Wednesday, I think 7:30. And I organized that today, so I'm gonna give myself some credit. I called Denise Hurt, and Chad Burt, and St. Joe, and Gary Geller, and all of our coaches. I said, "Hey, we need to do something for our kids. Let's have an amphitheater for our fall sports program." That's what this amphitheater is about. So you're gonna have St. Joe and Ross up here playing their alma mater songs, waking up Mr. Glebo and his wife, probably, who live across the street. And we're gonna recognize our fall athletes and wish them luck. So join me back here for that on August 28th. I think it's Wednesday, August 28th. I know you guys can share Facebook posts, 'cause there's about 600 of these car show posts. So I know you know how to share. So let's share that. Let's share these other youth events that are going on. Let's share the things that are making a difference. The Cruisin' Car Show's making a difference, but let's share the other things too, so everyone knows what's going on. Everyone have a blessed night and stay safe, and thank you all for being here.
I love you, Dave.
Okay. Holly Elder?
Hi, I'm Holly Elder, I'm Fremont City Treasurer, and I would just like to thank Mayor Sanchez for his very passionate oration. But what I would really like to say is I would really like to thank Mr. Ken Frost back to the city of Fremont. He is our Safety Service Director, and the first two words in his title are "Safety and Service." And he has dedicated many, many years to the city of Fremont, making our city safe and making our city serviceable. And he has also just done that for our nation. He spent many, many, many weeks and several months serving our nation as a military serviceman. And I just really want everyone to know that if it weren't for people like Mr. Ken Frost, our nation would not be as safe as it is today. So thank you, Ken.
Okay. I'm- If you want.
At this time, we're gonna do council comments, and I will be carrying the microphone down the tables. None? Mr. Sleek?
Thank you. I'm Councilman Sleek. Jim Sleek. Wanted to thank Ken Frost for all you do. Thank you, Mayor, for the words of encouragement, and we got a lot going on in this city. So let's pull together, no matter what side you're on, and let's do it right. 'Cause there's a lot of fun. There's a lot of things happening yet at this amphitheater that we haven't even announced yet. So as a councilman, for a second word, I'm very proud to serve the community and anything that happens down here. So thank you.
I'm Councilman Angie Reese from the 3rd Ward-
I'm Councilman Angie Reese from the Third Ward. And first of all, I would like to give credit to the person, to the council member that suggested us having a meeting here, and his hard work for getting it accomplished, Seth Fraser. I'd also like to second Mrs. Elder's, um, thank you to Ken Frost, and I welcome him back safe and sound. And, uh, I'd also like to mention that Ms. Bilger mentioned about Charlotte Urban passing away. We mentioned some of that last week, or at our last meeting, but we did not have the crowd. So just to make sure that everybody is aware, that Charlotte Urban was the person that started the Tree and Beautification Commission here in Fremont. She started it way back in 1980-something, and that is the committee or the commission that goes around, at present, we're going around and taking inventory of all the trees that we have, the ones with limbs that need to be trimmed, the ones that are gonna have to be knocked down, the ones that are going to be replaced. That is one of the, uh, works that the commission does. We also take care of Schumi's Corner, and, um, we take care of Walsh Park, the landscaping, the flowers, not so much the landscaping, Steve Stutz takes care of that. So Charlotte is, is to be given credit for starting that commission. And I'd also like to thank the Fremont City Police Department and the Fire Department for being on the lookout for all of us and taking care of us.
Couple things.
We do have the best city service, um, departments here with the Police Department and the Fire
My name's John Elder, I'm on the first, I'm a councilman-at-large. If you wonder, the way we set up at this, at the front, that gang at that end represent
Department. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
the four different wards of Fremont.
Good evening, welcome everybody to the Best Ward, the Fourth Ward.
Us at this end, we're considered the at-large council members, so we kind of cover the entire city.
Good to see you all here tonight.
Um, if you ever, ever have any issues, things you want done, um, you can contact your individual
Just a few comments, again, Best Ward. The fair starts next week, so good luck to everyone participating, the 4Hers, FFA, every,
ward, or you can contact one of us to take care of things.
every business that donates, that goes there and attends it.
But that's generally kind of the governmental setup that you have for the city, okay?
I hope we have a great fair week. Just one sort of comment, um, a couple of weeks ago, I was able to have a Dora in Bowling
I'd like to reiterate what my wife, the city treasurer, and Councilman Sleek and Reese said.
Green, and I noticed over there, their cups are sponsored by the Tractor Pole, the National
Thank you to Ken Frost, and welcome back. Next Saturday, August 24th, is the annual Norm Bray Cross Country Event, and if you
Tractor Pole. So I think we should have a discussion, and I don't know if we have to amend the ordinance
live on Morrison Road or that part of town by Walsh Park, next Saturday morning it's
or any of the rules, but about selling sponsorships for the Dora Cups.
gonna be packed with traffic, just FYI.
I know there's some regulations on that.
If you plan on going anyplace, being in a hurry, you probably won't be.
I, I understand it's about time to buy some more for the city, so I think before we place
And lastly, I will not be attending the first meeting in September, I have a family wedding
another order, we should explore that, see if we can raise some money as a part of it,
out of state, so I'd ask to be excused.
and, uh, maybe we'd have a couple of different sponsors for the Dora Cups that would, um,
Thank you.
raise some money, but also, um, could benefit some events, organizations in town with the
Thank you, John. My name is, uh, Councilman Deniotti, and I am also a council-at-large.
advertising. So, thank you, Madam President.
And first of all, I'd like to start out by thanking Ken Frost. We missed you, thank you for your service. Also, things going on, summer isn't over yet, folks. Uh, we got a farmer's market coming up, of course, this weekend. Uh, the fair starts Sunday. We have races, entertainment, so there's plenty of things to do in the city. So we appreciate you all coming out tonight. I've always said, I've always wanted to see more people at a city council meeting. So, uh, this is good to see, thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Christine Weiss, I'm Councilwoman-at-large. Just want to thank everybody for coming out, and so glad to have Ken Frost back, so we're glad to see you. Just wanted to, uh, echo the sentiments of Mrs. Elder, um, and, and the mayor's sentiments as well. They speak, uh, very highly of, of our community. Just want to talk about Blues Brews &amp; Broats, that is this Saturday, I know Ms. Bilger talked about that, um, that event is held here, and, um, they raise, the Rotary raises funds for, uh, for exactly for this amphitheater, so they raised a lot of funds for this amphitheater. So come out for that on this Saturday night. And then, uh, lastly, I just wanted to give condolences to Bob Gross and his family. Bob is our Economic Development Director, and he lost his mother this week, so I just wanted to share that. So, um, thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to do some public comments or questions, if the public has anything they would like to ask or say. It's a three-minute rule, you can come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Seth Kinney.
I'm actually really nervous, I don't know if I can do this today. All right. Stand with me. All right, stand with me, I know nobody's gonna hurt me, nobody up here is gonna hurt me. Mostly that guy sitting down over there.
As long as it's good. Don't make me walk away.
Okay.
Uh, good afternoon, everybody, my name is Jim Otney, I live at 104 Colony Court. Uh, I agree with a lot that Mr. Sanchez, Sanchez says about, uh, Fremont coming together as a group, and, but, this is really focused on you, Mr. Sanchez. Uh, I'd like to know what you're gonna do about my 11-year-old grandson last week tried to get picked up by a 42-year-old man. I know who it is, I'm more than welcome to state that on record, if you like, right now. Uh, there was a report made, nothing happened to him. I'd like to know why. We have kids, 15, 16-year-old kids carrying guns, pulling guns on people. Our Fremont PD, they're not doing nothing about that either. But when somebody tries to do their First Amendment right on the street, they get harassed and try to get arrested. So what are you gonna do to keep us all together as a group?
Is that it? Yeah. You want?
Sure. Yes, go ahead.
Uh, first off, I appreciate you coming to city council tonight to address your concerns. Unfortunately, as, as the mayor, I'm not necessarily aware of every individual criminal investigation that's taken place, so I don't have the answer for you right now. Our police chief is here tonight, um, he's standing right back here. So, um, as the police chief, this would be something that he would be able to answer for you, and, uh, I'm sure he will provide an answer to me and/or the Safety Service Director to find out what you're referencing. Sure, I'm, I'm just not sure what you're, you're referencing, okay? So I'm not avoiding, I just don't know the answer to your question, because I'm not sure, it's a, it would be a criminal investigation.
Shouldn't that go back to the mayor? Something like that, where a kid is trying to get picked up by a 42-year-old man?
So I'll, I'll, I'll answer your question. As the mayor, I'm not responsible for criminal investigations. As the mayor, I do not have the legal authority by law to tell the police chief who and who he can't charge with a criminal offense. We have a city law director who's also our prosecutor right here, his name's Jim Melly, he's the elected law director, he also has a city prosecutor, and there's certain processes that have to take place on criminal investigations, okay? So as the mayor, you're correct, it's my job to make sure our community's safe, but that's why we hire a Safety Service Director, that's why we have a police chief at a police department. I believe that we have a very good police department here in the city of Fremont, okay? Is there room for improvement? Yes. Do I agree with everything that takes place? No. Do I issue corrective action and discipline and things like that? Yes, and so does the police chief. But in this certain circumstance, I don't think it would be fair to you or anyone else to discuss an ongoing criminal investigation publicly, okay? All right, thank you.
Anyone else want to come up?
Hi, my name is Carrie Edkins, and I live on South Street. I wondered if the street sweeper is out of commission, we haven't seen it this year, last year, and it really needs some work, so I don't know if it's a budget issue or... but we'd really like to see one down our street.
Hi, Carrie, yeah, it's, yes, the street sweeper has been out, uh, Mr. Jack Ferguson runs the street sweeper. Uh, I cannot tell you for certain when they were on South Street or when they're planning to get to South Street, but I know that they do the streets, or they do city quadrants, basically. I've only been back in town for a few days, and, and I know that they were out because I, they were actually right up the road when I was coming to work, like, three days ago, four days ago, whatever it was. So they are out, I just don't know when they'll get to you. If you want to call my office, um, I can get it, I can get an answer for you, just leave your number, just leave a message, and I can call you back, and I'll get an answer for you for when they're gonna be on South Street. Yep?
Okay, my name's Dave Baker, I live on the corner of Rosewood and, um, St. Joseph's Street. Now, we've got the rec center down there. People on that street, drive up and down that street 60 mile an hour, because I followed them one time, just to find out how fast they're going. I think this is bull, we need to get somebody over there to do something. When they had the tra, they had the traffic thing up there last year for about two weeks, it slowed them down. The day that they took it down, 20 minutes after that, they was right back to the same speeds. The stop signs on Rosewood, 90% of people do not stop at that stop sign. So what we need to do is probably put stop signs all up and down that street, on every intersection, and then ma, four-way stops, that way they all have to stop, if they would, but they ain't going to. We need to do something with these people. Years ago, when I first moved into that place, I'd come for the same things. They went and started addressing the issue, and people were complaining when they were getting the tickets and everything, because they lived there on that street. It doesn't matter if you lived there, you still gotta abide by the laws. One other thing, mini bikes. There's mini bikes and four-wheelers and e-bikes all over the streets down there, and they wave from one side of the street to the other. They don't pay no attention to the traffic. We need to do something with that, too. Because when I was a kid, there was laws against that, unless they've been changed. So I think we need to get something done about that kind of stuff. So...
Thank you. I guess I get to talk a lot tonight, I was trying not to talk. Mr. Baker, thank you very much for coming up and bringing that to our attention. Uh, what I will tell you is that, uh, the chief of police is here, uh, I'm the Safety Service Director, uh, you have been heard, and, uh, myself and the chief will get together tomorrow and discuss possible solutions, deterrence, whatever we need to do. And I would encourage you to also, please, if you wouldn't mind, uh, call our office and just leave your, your number on our voicemail, so that I can call you back and let you know what we've come up with or what our future plans are. Uh, that way you know that your voice has been heard, and, and maybe you have some good ideas for us, for what we can do. So maybe if we all, if we kind of work together, me, you, and the chief of police, maybe we can come up with a good solution.
I used to call every time there was a drug deal, happy over at the grocery store in the parking lot, and they would ask me, "How many people's in the car? What color are the cars? Can you see the lights and snow?" And I would have to tell them that it doesn't matter now, because they're going. Drug deals don't take a long time. 20 minutes later, they go by. But the one time when there was a robbery at the grocery store, they were there, it was within five minutes, there was two cop cars stuck in the parking lot, two going down State Street, because they knew the turds moved to fly, with the lights and sirens on. I called them back up and asked them, "Could they steal some damn doughnuts?"
I don't have an answer for that. The only thing I can do is address it with the chief of police, and I will get back to you if you provide me your number.
Hi, my name's Stephen Jefferson, 415 Southwood. I'd like to put a spotlight on the intersection of Hayes and Stone Street. I believe it's poorly designed and encourages risky driving behavior, specifically the pattern where you're going southbound on Stone and take a left onto Hayes. I believe that people make very risky driving decisions there. And I'm not a civil engineer, I'm not here to present a solution, but one needs to, yeah. Thank you.
Did we just talk about this at the last meeting? Actually, the intersection that you're talking about, I believe, is, is the one by the carryout, correct? Where it kind of, okay, so that's actually in the county? But what I will do tomorrow is I will call Carlos, the county engineer, and let him know that you were here at our council meeting and had a complaint, and, uh, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I, I just got back, I've been gone for a while, but before I left, I believe there was some talk of doing something with that intersection, but that would be at the county level. I will, however, I will call him and, and make sure that he knows that you were here and speaking at our meeting, okay? Yep?
Jeremy Rosen, uh, 609 Whittlesey Street here in Fremont. Thank you, Mr. Frost, for your service, and welcome back. Um, jeez, I'm 40-some years old, and I'm still not good at talking in front of people, but, uh, I have a little bit of a concern with the crime rate that's going on around here, and the blatant, I would say, overview or letting these things happen with stolen vehicles, UTVs, four-wheelers, it's blatant who's doing it, they have been notified. We've had them on film, and all of the information's been given to the chief of police, wherever he is. They investigated my case for my stolen vehicle for about six months, had fingerprints and DNA taken, and I had to basically force them to do anything with those materials. The DNA was taken for the case, and we were told to come within two days, everybody in my house, to give our DNA, so they could run it, just to find out, a week later, that since it was a non-violent crime, our DNA swabs would not be tested. So, fast forward four months down their line, still questioning if fingerprints have been run by BCI, which the detectives, the chief of police, nobody knew if they were run, if they were delivered, what happened with them. To come to find out, after six months, they're closing the case, nothing found, and I questioned what happens with these fingerprints, and it was still unsure if these were actually run. Just to find out, two days later, detective calls me and says, "They came back with..."
Jeremy Rosen, 609 Whittlesey Street, here in Fremont. Thank you, Mr. Frost, for your service, and welcome back. Jeez, I'm 47 years old, and I'm still not good at talking in front of people, but I have a little bit of a concern with the crime rate that's going on around here, and the blatant, I would say, overview, or letting these things happen with stolen vehicles, UTVs, four-wheelers. It's blatant who's doing it. They have been notified. We've had them on film, and all of the information's been given to the chief of police, wherever he is. They investigated my case for my stolen vehicle for about six months, had fingerprints and DNA taken, and I had to basically force them to do anything with those materials. The DNA was taken for the case, and we were told to come within two days, everybody in my house, to give our DNA, so they could run it. Just to find out, a week later, that since it was a nonviolent crime, our DNA swabs would not be tested. So fast forward four months down the line, still questioning if fingerprints have been run by BCI, which the detectives, the chief of police, nobody knew if they were run, if they were delivered, what happened with them. To come to find out, after six months, they're closing the case, nothing found, and I questioned what happens with these fingerprints, and it was still unsure if these were actually run. Just to find out, two days later, detective calls me, and says, "They came back with no hits on the fingerprints." But trying for six months to get any type of answer, even a lie would have been better than six months of nothing, and we're trying everything. At least give me a phony number, a name, something. But it seems to be of no concern. So the case has been closed, and I've respectfully asked twice, three times, actually four times, for the items taken from my property be returned. And the response was, I can have a broken lock, and basically, a piece of plastic that was broken off my car. And I said, "Can I please have the DNA swabs test taken, so I can have them run myself, since you're not going to do them anymore? The case is closed." And I've had a response of one of the workers saying that they can only give back the items stated in the original email. I followed up with three emails, with no response, saying, "Do I have to get my lawyer involved to obtain these DNA swabs, so I can have them tested myself?" Because we know of a thief that is 200 feet from my house, that is still out there stealing. And we have video of them stealing again a month ago. And this was given to the chief of police, to his police officers, and to the sheriff's department. And still, nothing. So my question is, is anything illegal anymore? Is anything ever going to happen to people stealing shit? And excuse my language, but I lost things I will never, ever get back in my life. And the police department is like, "Your loss, bud. Sorry." Can't even run the DNA. I would pay for it. Pay for it. But no, we can't look into it. Six months of listening to just lies. And then you want us to come down here and make it look like it's all good? It's just kind of, kind of a bad thing. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yeah. Jeremy, thank you for coming down tonight. Listen, it's important for you guys to come to these meetings, so that way your voice can be heard. I know that I spoke to the other gentleman, David, who's in the back there, and I've encouraged him to come down to city council meeting. I'm disappointed to hear, Jeremy, that you were treated that way, and that you feel that no one cared about your case, or the situation, and I don't know where you went. Where'd you go? Okay, I see you in the middle, okay. I know we spoke on the phone, and I did talk to the police chief, and I did encourage them to get with you, and to look into, talk with you about this case. It's been a while now. Now, these cases aren't in my desk, right? So I do try to be complimentary of the police department, because I respect the fact of what they do every single day to protect and serve. But it's also important that they're providing a level of professionalism to people who are victimized of crimes, and that they're, that people like you are treated with respect, and that you feel that they're doing the best job they can to solve your crime. And at the very least, communication is key, right? That's all you're asking for, besides your DNA. I don't know about how that works, if they sent it out, or they got it back. I don't know about all the weeds of the investigation. I hear you referencing the police chief, but it sounds like Mr. Frost needs to look into this, and figure out what's going on with this case, to try to get you some answers, okay?
And I'd like to speak a little bit on the Cruises, not so much the cancellation, but that is a part of it. We heard the mayor stand up here and say that we're going to have it on the 28th. We can still have one, but it can be la di frickin' da. This is how it has to be. And I absolutely agree with that. We don't need the shenanigans that we had before. But what I would like to know is why every one of you, and the mayor, and you, and the police, did nothing about it for seven years? It was frickin' fine. Everything, you know what I'm talking about. The donuts in the middle of the road, the black smoke from the diesel trucks.
What do you want me to do?
You have a police department that's against the law.
I agree with you.
Then why weren't they arresting these people?
They were instructed to enforce traffic laws.
That's not an answer. I ask you why they didn't.
It's the answer I gave you. It's the answer I gave you.
Yeah, okay, that's the answer you gave me. I'm very disappointed in this entire panel. You've been bought and paid for. Maybe that's not a nice thing to say, but I happen to believe it's the truth, and so do a lot of other people in this town, in this area. When one person can make that much difference, there's something wrong with our community. I thank you.
I'm going to stay clear of that one. Is there anybody else? All right.
How you doing, buddy?
Good, I'm doing good. Hello, everybody. Hopefully, everybody's doing good. Anyway, my name is David Graham. Born and raised here in Fremont, Ohio. Born in 1955, if anybody's interested. Be 70 years old. So I've seen a lot of Fremont in my eyes over my time of life. I was a UPS person. I delivered these streets 40-plus years. Seen a lot of changes here in Fremont downtown especially. Needless to say, when I was down there, it wasn't as nice as it is now. I do appreciate that. I just wish I could have delivered when it was this nice. But I want to talk a little bit about the car show, and I appreciate everything that Mike and Tina and the farmers have done, and I think it's a good thing. I agree with Danny Sanchez, that all we need now is just a little bit of respect for everybody. And I think that if we get that, we can continue this car show without the trophies, and all the other stuff that goes along with it. But anyway, so that's about all I got to say. I hope everybody still comes out on the 28th, lines the street of Fremont, and they can keep their wheels not spinning super fast, and everybody have a good time. Thank you.
How you doing?
Good.
Hi, my name's Tom Gleba. I live on 216 South Arch Street. I just wanted to thank city council, Mayor Sanchez, Bob Gross, on behalf of my wife and I. Living across from this project for the last year and a half, two years, has been a challenge. And we've gotten all of our issues addressed and resolved in a pretty peaceful manner. So things are pretty smooth now, and I want to thank everybody for, you know, helping us out in, you know, getting that accomplished. Everybody worked hard, everybody had an open-door policy, and everybody kept the lines of communication open, so I appreciate that. And I just wanted to say thank you, on behalf of my wife, and myself, to everybody on council. Bob Gross, Mayor Sanchez, thanks.
I'm from Castilla, so I'm about 35, 45 minutes away. I'm just going to touch base about Cruising State Street, man. I've been going to this ever since it started up. You know, I got a seven-year-old kid that absolutely loves cars, so I'm sure every adult here has a kid, or a grandkid, that loves cars. Am I correct? I mean, do you guys got kids and grandkids that love, love cars? I'll give respect where respect is due, so I'll respect everybody that's put in for this. Now, to do away with, my first, started coming here, the car show down at Potter Village, awesome. By far, hats off to everybody that's put in for that. I've went to Woodward Dream Cruise out there in Mansfield. They do the same thing, just downright awesome. You know, I give my respects to all the police officers, you know, they, I agree, they got a job to do. But in my eyes, we're, you know, like you guys were saying, we're getting away from what the yesterdays. You know, I'm young, I'm 37 years old. But when I started going to car shows, you know, there's trophies, there's people, blue colored people like myself, that can't afford high-end cars, or can't afford these classics, that put their time and money into these cars, that they drive daily. You know, and to take it out to a show, and for people to recognize that, and recognize the hard work that young kids, young kids coming up to build their own hot rod, or their own car, and to have it ripped away, is pretty much what it's like, is having something ripped away from you. It's just heartacheing. And, you know, why, why take something away from a kid that's putting their money into something, rather than putting it into drugs? You see what I'm saying? It makes no, in my, in my eyes, it makes no sense. You know, I've, I've been around the car scene my entire life, grown up around it, and to have it ripped away, that, that's just horrible. You know, I get, we're doing another car show, but it's not going to be like what it used to be seven years ago. You know, and I get the whole burning out, and rolling coal, and people being stupid, and for sure, 100%, it takes one jack wagon to ruin it all for everybody. 100%. And I agree with that. But like I've told other people, there's ways to go about not being stupid. I've done it. And I guess I'm just kind of talking in circles at this point, but it just sucks for up-and-coming young kids to have something ripped away. You know, and I'm just going to leave it at that, you know? I agree, I don't agree with having it ripped away. I would just like for it to be continued the way it used to be in Potter Village. You know, y'all had a great turnout when you guys did the pin-up, and everything like that. There was a lot of people I knew that went to that, and enjoyed themselves. So there's that.
Thank you.
You know, I like Fremont because of the community, and Danny Sanchez, and I like coming down to the council here, and amphitheater, because of Tina. And Danny came my game Saturday down at Ryder Park, and we came third place. And I love the community, and you got to come and see my brother, and that's Saturday night down in town. Saturday night.
Thanks, Jed.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Frazier makes a motion to adjourn. Chris Leibold seconds. Roll call.
Reese?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Melzer?
Yes.
Leibold?
Yes.